Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Meeting on January 10th, 2024, our first city council meeting. Happy New Year to those that I have not seen to date. Could you please do a roll call, please? Oh, excuse me. Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. May I roll call, please?
Counselor Novak.
Here.
Counselor Newton.
Present.
Counselor Cupsons.
Here.
Counselor Madigou. Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor McGee.
Present.
And Mayor Johnson, second.
Here. Thank you very much for being here this evening. Last year and the year before, I did a mayor's message. I'm going to read my message now. Thank you all for being here with us this evening on our first city council meeting of 2024. I am honored to be here, continue to serve as our community, serve our community as mayor. I am truly blessed to serve alongside my fellow counselors in governing the city of Albany, Oregon. I also express my sincerest appreciation for every member of staff and all the community members who volunteer on citizen advisor groups and in the city events and activities, activities and events. Albany is a thriving and vibrant city in the heart of Willamette Valley. Albany is growing. It is truly a wonderful hometown for nearly 58,000 residents and is welcoming committee to thousands of travelers every year. As we begin anew in 2024, I must reflect on a few other successes Albany experienced in 2023. We made it affordable to build smaller homes. We managed our steady growth. We expanded our transit system and acquired a bus barn from the school district. Our police department has recertified Calea Accreditation Agency, one of the three, only three in the state of Oregon. We won awards for our bio solids composting program. We converted our street lights to LED, saving tens of thousands of dollars in energy costs. Our downtown continues to grow and thrive. We have maintained a strong and supportive workplace and managed succession of longtime employees. We also transitioned to a new municipal court judge and an Albany student won statewide if a warmer contest. It was an amazing victory. I can go, I actually could go on for hours, but I'll continue. I'm happy to report that we executed well on the goals and objectives of the city strategic plan. Complete details are in the 2023 report on the city of Albany website. It's our little, our report card. Our strategic plan enables our city council to be thoughtful and deliberate in planning for the future. On your behalf, it requires us to envision the future of, the future of Albany. It serves as a guiding document to ensure we do our best to meet Albany's current and future needs, exceed Albany's current and future needs, and it provides purposeful direction to staff as they execute the plan. Overall, our mission remains to provide quality public services for the better Albany community, for a better Albany community. Albany will continue to change and grow in 2024. We have very important issues to address this year under our strategic plan. Four strategic plan themes, including healthy economy, completing of the waterfront project, and proactively seeking additional economic development opportunities to build on Albany's economic prosperity. Safe city, adding emergency medical service capacity to meet the growing demands for service calls. Calls are up 19% fiscal year 2020. Our health system, healthcare system is operating at max capacity, and we are working with them to provide increased community pragmatic services to help ease their burden and increase our availability to respond to the next emergency. Great neighborhoods, seeking grants and other funding to improve and maintain our public infrastructure, including local streets, water distribution, wastewater and stormwater. Effective government to continue responsible stewardship of your money. The city council will continue to be a transparent, engaging government body focused on improving the life in Albany. In closing, I humbly ask that we work together to make progress towards a better Albany for all of us. Thank you for your attention and time this evening. With respect, Alexander D. Johnson, second mayor, city of Albany, Oregon.
Thank you all for your time. Next is a special presentation, Relay for Life. Kimberly Damon. Join us.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson and council members. First, I'd like to thank Mayor Johnson for joining us in our 2023 Relay for Life of Albany event this past June 2023, and thank him for inviting me to actually come and speak before you this evening. I brought a couple little visual aids for people that don't know about Relay for Life. And I'm going to speak off of my, my sheet so I don't run down different tangents for you. My name is Kimberly Damon, and this evening I'm speaking before you on behalf of our local American Cancer Society's Relay for Life event. I brought a few visuals with me. I've just shared them with you folks who are unfamiliar with Relay. What is Relay for Life? The idea dreamed up and made happen by a cancer doctor and surgeon named Gordy Klatt. Dr. Klatt stepped on the University of Puget Sound's track in Tacoma, Washington in May of 1985 for a 24-hour fundraiser. He ran and walked over those 24 hours, logging a total of 83 miles and raising $27,000 in his fight against cancer. Friends, family, colleagues, and passerby came to the field and joined him on the track during this 24-hour trek. Since that humble beginning in 1985, millions of people around the world have been inspired to relay in his footsteps, raising more than $5 billion to help eradicate cancer. In 2012, Dr. Klatt participated in Relay for Life as a cancer survivor himself. He's lovingly referred to as Father of Relay. Relay for Life is a volunteer-led experience that unites communities. Although every Relay for Life event embraces the uniqueness of their home community, every event includes the same four signature elements. A celebration of cancer survivors, a celebration of caregivers, a luminaria celebration to honor and remember loved ones, and the opportunity to fight back against cancer. Relay for Life is the American Cancer Society's signature fundraiser. The American Cancer Society could not advance their mission without the passionate support of the global force of Relay for Life. The American Cancer Society, or ACS, as I will refer to it, is a leading cancer-fighting organization with a vision of ending cancer as we know it for everyone. They are the only organization working to improve the lives of people with cancer and their families through advocacy, education, research, and patient services and support. ACS provides the support and guidance people impacted by cancer need at every step, from increasing access to screening at the local, state, and federal levels, and advocating for more affordable healthcare, to guiding patients and caregivers through ACS's free 24/7 helpline and helping them get the treatment they need by offering free transportation and lodging. In addition, they also fund and conduct research so people in every community have the opportunity to prevent, detect, treat, and survive cancer. We have life-saving research taking place in our own backyard with OHSU and OSU receiving 13 ACS-funded grants combined totaling more than $12.8 million. As of August 2023, ACS is currently funding 684 grants totaling more than $445 million in research across the United States. And now that you've learned the what, let me share my why. Why do I relay? Like many of you seated before me, I have lost many family, friends, family friends, and friends of family to cancer. I knew about losing people to cancer when I was young. My great aunt and my grandfather both died at early ages of 52 and 62. But it wasn't until 1996 that it really hit, hit me when my 50-year-old mother lost her life to breast cancer after a brief two-year battle. I was only 29 years old. I was a mother of a two-and-a-half-year-old boy, and he was spunky. I was pregnant with a child my mother would never meet, and I was preparing my mother's funeral because of cancer. I was finally old enough and mature enough to really experience the effect of my loss from this disease. It was in 1999 that I learned about Relay for Life and joined my first Relay for Life event as a team member. Dr. Klatt believed that every one person could make a difference. So do I, and here I am. Since 1999, I've participated in Relay for Life off and on for more than 20 years. I am currently part of our local Relay for Life committee. Where do I relay? At our local relay, teams from Albany, Lebanon, and surrounding communities join in to set up campsites around a track while participants from each team take turns walking the track during the 12 hours of our event. Relay is more than just a fundraising walk. Relay is an opportunity for the community to unite for a common goal. We celebrate our cancer survivors and their caregivers by dedicating time, a ceremony, and a special lap to cheer them on. We remember loved ones lost to cancer and those who are and have fought cancer by lighting our track at dusk with luminaria bags, each dedicated to a loved one, such an inspiring sight to see. And finally, we raise funds to fight back against cancer. COVID put many things, including relay, into a tailspin. 2023 was a rebuild year for our local Relay for Life event. Our major focus last year was just getting the word out back to our community that we were still celebrating their cancer survivors and actively fighting back against cancer. With only 130 participants across 12 teams, we cleared $23,000 in our rebuild year. Our participant survey feedback showed total agreement that our relay event was both moving and inspirational, and virtually all felt survivors were celebrated and recognized. Where we were lacking, and we expected this, was with event signage, food availability, and you guessed it, community involvement. The survey feedback noted we needed more teams, more business involvement, and more community involvement. And here is why I'm seated before you this evening. Why should you relay? Relay is where we celebrate all cancer survivors and their caregivers. We need help getting the word out to these cancer survivors and their caregivers so they can be celebrated. Maybe you are one, or no others that are. We need more help with our leadership team to help make our next event even better than the years before. We were a small but mighty leadership team in 2023. Imagine what we could do with more leadership. We need more business and community involvement. There are many ways to get involved, such as creating a team, joining a team, hosting a fundraiser, or simply helping out get the word to others. We need more help with fundraising and sponsorship. Perhaps you have an amazing fundraising idea for us, or maybe you know a business that would enjoy being a part of our efforts. There are many types and levels of sponsorship opportunities, like donating meeting room space for monthly meetings, which we really do need, or donating items for our event concessions, or sponsoring a ceremony, or sponsoring a team, just to name a few things. Our event is currently working on a t-shirt design contest with the Candle Lighters for Children with Cancer Org and organization. The winning design will be featured on t-shirts and be used for the purpose of sponsorship recognition and fundraising for our relay event. All submitted designs will be used for promotional materials and be put on display at our event in June. Perhaps you have a different fundraising idea that you could share. Now that you've heard the what, the where, and my why, let's get to our when. 2023 Relay kickoff and event are coming up really soon. Our 2024 open house-style kickoff is around the corner, scheduled for Saturday, June 20th, from noon until 4:00 PM at the Phoenix Inn of Albany. Folks can stop by to get additional information about Relay for Life, ask questions, pick up materials, register for the event as a participant and/or survivor, and enjoy the company of fellow relayers. Light refreshments will also be provided. Our 2024 event is scheduled for Saturday, June 12th, I apologize, Saturday, June 15th, from 10:00 AM until 10:00 PM. It's a 12-hour event at the South Albany High School track. The national theme the ACS has for Relay for Life this year is every cancer, every life. Having lost immediate family and friends to breast cancer, colon cancer, leukemia, cancer of the spleen, prostate cancer, lung cancer, ovarian cancer, and uterine cancer, I really appreciate the American Cancer Society's commitment to eradicating all cancers. Cancer does not discriminate, so our fight shouldn't either. Our event website is available at relayforlife.org/AlbanyOR. I brought kickoff invitations and 2024 sponsorship packets with me this evening. I believe each of you have them, and there's more at the table. And I've also provided Mayor Johnson with electronic versions as well. I shared a lot of information with you this evening, but would be remiss if I forgot to share the American Cancer Society's website and toll-free number in the event anyone in this room or watching online may ever need help for themselves or a loved one facing cancer. The ACS website is simply cancer.org, and the number is 1-800-ACS-2345. That's 1-800-227-2345. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to share about a cause that is near and dear to my heart and to close my time by making the ask and inviting the Albany City Council to join us in making the 2024 Relay for Life Albany-Cravallis-Lebanon event the best one yet. Thank you and have a nice evening.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have any comments, questions, or comments for Kimberly? What I would like to say is that I lost my mother at 61 to cancer, breast cancer specifically, and my sister in 2008. And so I appreciate you inviting me to this initial event, and I will look forward to being there this year in support. And we need to talk about sponsorship, but I really do appreciate you coming out today. And, huh? Oh, my mic's on. Can everybody hear me back there? Thank you. But I do appreciate the things that you're doing in the community, and we hope to make it a bigger event for everyone.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda is a legislative and quasi-judicial public hearing regarding the planning files AN03-23 and ZZZC06-23. The proposed, the, this, the proposal is for annexation of nine properties that are subject to the irrevocable request to annex with concurrent zoning map amendments. Additionally, this proposal includes annexation of right-ofways and inadvertently not annexed when adjacent to property was an annex, specifically segments of Goldfish Farm Road, Century Drive, Interstate 5, Santiam Highway, and 53rd Avenue. The annexation will also remove property from the taxation, the taxing district of the Albany Rural Fire District, Fire Protection District. I call to order this legislative and quasi-judicial public hearing at 6:16 PM. If you wish to testify, there were three options available which were described in the agenda. Do any members of, wish to declare a conflict of interest? Counsel McGee? Okay. Hearing none. Do any members wish to report an ex parte communication? Do any members wish to report a site visit? Hearing none. Do any members wish to abstain from participating in this proceedings? Does anyone wish to challenge the city council's right to determine this matter or the participation of any council member in this hearing and decision? If so, please raise your hand. If you are attending in person, if you're attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. Or if you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name and so you can be called upon. At this time, I call for a reading of the memo, meeting procedures.
I'm right there. Good evening. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue recludes an action for damages in circuit court.
At this time, I call for a staff report from project planner David Martino.
Thank you. We're having a bit of a technical problem here, and I'm wondering if anybody else in the room is sharing their screen because we don't seem to be able to share ours.
Matt? Matthew, can you help him out?
Okay, now it seems to work. We're over there and click on that.
Really small.
Click on.
My reading glasses aren't going to help there at all. There we go.
Click on from the beginning. Buttons go back and forth.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Get myself together here. Okay, go ahead, move one slide. Thanks. Okay, so summary of the request. On July 24th, 2023, the city council directed staff to annex all of the properties that were subject to irrevocable requests. This application proposes to annex nine separate parcels of land that are outside the city limits and subject to irrevocable request to annex, along with adjacent right-of-way and several adjacent city of Albany properties. The annexations are being processed concurrently with zone map amendments from Lynn County zoning to city of Albany's residential single-dwelling unit zone, residential medium density, and open space zoning designations upon annexation. With the annexation, the subject properties will also be removed from the taxing district of the Albany Rural Fire Protection District. So in your packet, you'll see different separate exhibits with close-ups showing all nine areas to be annexed. And first are the legal descriptions for these areas that were prepared here by Gordon Stephens Meyer. These are labeled Exhibit A, beginning on page seven in your packet. And then the legal descriptions correspond to map exhibits for each area. Each of the legal descriptions and map exhibits also show sections of right-of-way being brought into the city. These are labeled Exhibit B, beginning on page 18 in your council packet. And then finally, you'll see copies of all of the signed and recorded irrevocable requests for annexations that were executed by the city and property owners in exchange for either sewer or water service. These are labeled Exhibit D, beginning on page 61 in your council packet. So there's four review criteria pertaining to annexations, and they're found in the Development Code, Section 2.110. And there's four. So the first one is eligibility. In other words, are the properties within the urban growth boundary and are they contiguous to the city limits? The second is infrastructure, and that is whether urban services are already available or can be made available. The third one relates to planning, planned studies and area refinement plans. Are these annexations consistent with those? And then finally, the fourth one, reasonableness, and that would be the council determination that the annexations are reasonable. Now, we do have set of review criteria for anybody in the public that wants one. We have them right there on the back table by the entrance. So then concurrent zoning will also be applied to the properties. So here are the five review criteria for a zoning map amendment. This request was evaluated against zoning map amendment review criteria in Section 2.740 of the Development Code, and also these are available on paper by the entrance to the council chambers. So the proposed zones, they're here on the screen. These are the zones that are most compatible based upon the surrounding area that's in the city limits and zoned the same way. So this is what the different zoning designations would be for the properties. And I'll note that the last one, 2958 53rd Avenue Southwest, which is the Lynn Benton Community College Equestrian Center, that will be zoned open space along the western half, and then RS 6.5 on the eastern half. And I'll explain why in just a minute. Okay, so public notice. Notice that public hearings were mailed to property owners within 300 feet on November 13th of 23. The staff report and exhibits were posted on the Planning Commission Planning Projects homepage since November 27th, 2023. The newspaper notice published November 16th, and each site was posted on November 20th of 2023. We received two written comments prior to the Planning Commission hearing. Those comments, together with staff responses, are included in your staff report. At the December 4th, 2023 Planning Commission, we received a petition with 23 signatures opposed to annexing the LBCC Equestrian property at 2958 53rd Avenue Southwest. And then we received an additional letter of comment, also included in your packet. And then finally, December 19th, 2023, we received a second letter of opposition from Bobby Joe Johnson. And then just yesterday, January 9th, we received a second letter of opposition from Sandra McDaniel. Both are residents that live on 53rd. And their comments have also been provided to you. So the, to clear up any misinformation concerning the LBCC Equestrian Center property, here on the screen, you'll see it, it's got the little black hash marks on it. It's on the very southerly, westerly part of 53rd Avenue where it dead ends. Okay, next one. So the situation with this property is that it's heavily encumbered by a number of different overlays, one of which is open space comprehensive plan designation. So that's that area of green that you see on the left side of the picture there. So that means that when that property gets annexed to the city, we have to assign it the zone that's consistent with the comprehensive plan. So in this case, that westerly half would be zoned open space. The easterly half of the property is designated in the comprehensive plan as public or semi-public. And that's consistent with properties where you see things like schools, colleges, that type of thing. And any zone is actually compatible with the public semi-public zoning designation. We've decided to zone it RS 6.5 because that's consistent with the comprehensive plan designation on the property just to the east, and also those properties that are within the city limits on the north side are so zoned RS 6.5. It would not be appropriate to zone it some other type of a residential zone just by itself over there. The picture on the right shows the floodplain and floodway designation. And so you'll see a pattern on this that has like pink and blue lines on it. It's not just floodway or floodplain, that's actually floodway. So that's floodwater moving with velocity. And so you'll see that the far westerly part of the property and the southern part of the property is encumbered by a floodway where no development is proposed. Can't be. Okay, next slide, please. So taken together, this is what you see when you overlap these overlays. So you see the open space, you see the floodway. There's also a significant wetland designated on the eastern side of this property. So the only areas that could ever conceivably be developed further are those areas that are not under one of those overlays. And I point that little area out, and it probably doesn't amount to more than about three-quarters of an acre. Okay, so at the end of the day. Too much paper. Okay, so as proposed in condition, we find that these applications satisfy all of the applicable review criteria as outlined in the staff report. So the Planning Commission recommends that the city council approve the applications with one condition. At the time of annexation, the subject property shall be removed from the taxing district of the Albany Rural Fire Protection District and annexed into the Albany Fire District. That's, that's all we have.
Thank you. Do any members wish, members have clarifying questions regarding the staff report? We will now be taking public testimony, first from those in favor of the applications, followed by those in opposition or with concerns, and finally, for anyone who is neutral. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and then email it to the address provided in the packet. So the first person that signed up to speak is against is Sandra J. McDaniel, resident of Albany, Oregon. I'm not going to butcher address out in public, so.
I don't care. I'm on 53rd Street. First of all, I'd like to ask, not ask some questions, but the maps that he put up in my letter, that was one of the things to ask for, and so I was wondering if I could get a copy of his overlay map.
David, is that possible?
We'll provide it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
You have three minutes, ma'am.
Okay, so my name is Sandra J. McDaniel. I live on 53rd Avenue. I've lived there 45 years, and I'm here to voice my opposition to the annexation and proposed zone designation of the LBC property. LBC is at a, at the end of a dead-end street. I understand that LBC is going to be annexed in the city. My concerns are, one, zoning of the land. And I see that he addressed some of my questions about the zoning, which is going to be what? My second concern is the annexation of 53rd Road. If you look on the exhibits that he gave you. If you look on the exhibits that he gave you, on Exhibit 9B, there's a real long area up 53rd Street that now they're wanting to annex. This is...I have no idea why they do that. The rest of the road is not being annexed. And then the, and the other exhibit is Exhibit A, and it's when the irrevocable request and annex was, the map shows that that is not on the first map. So I hope that you will address those before you approve the annexation. My big concerns are, you've annexed, are trying to annex a property right up to my property line. I live in the county. Are you going to make me and the other owners of these lands have to put in sidewalks because now you have it as city land in front of my house? I think those are my biggest concerns with your annexation.
Thank you. We all have a chance to hear back from them as soon as we get further down. Next on tonight's agenda, or excuse me, list is Bobby Joe Johnson, opposition. Is that Bobby Joe Johnson?
It is. I must have poor handwriting.
No, just, I'm also blind, so it's okay. For three minutes, ma'am.
Yes. I'm opposed to the current proposed zoning of the LBCC property, specifically to the zone map amendments ADC 2.740 that was indicated in that notice stating that it complies with all of the criteria. The proposed base zone of RS 6.5 is not consistent with the neighboring properties, and an unindicated, which has now been indicated, open space area was adequate information at that time. Our property is the closest RS 6.5. Adding that residential area of 6.5 could lead to several homes on that property, and it would be devastating to our tiny community down there where the south side of the street are all county residents that live on acreage. So the east side of the LBCC property is single-family residence with an acre or more of land, and that's how it's zoned. I would ask that the city council consider rezoning or designating to an RS 10 that would still allow for that public education portion that they mentioned, and it would also limit the number of homes, keeping it more in line with the surrounding areas. And that's all that I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next on the list is, I miss handwriting, Paul...who is that person?
How you doing?
Thank you. Coming this evening?
I just have two questions for this. I just have two questions for everybody.
Please address the council.
In this room, I got two questions. One is, if I called you, or text you, or emailed you, would you respond?
Would you please address the council?
Would you respond?
Excuse me, sir. Please address the council.
I'm addressing everybody in this room.
No, you're not. Address the council. I most likely will. Depends on what I'm doing.
How about you, sir? You too? Come on.
Sir, this is business from the public, so this is for you to state your business.
I'm a citizen of this county.
Sir.
And I have you, let you know that you're elected official. And if I call you, you should respond to...
Sir, sir, this is not during business from the public. This is a hearing. You can...this is not, this is not, this is not the time for a business from the public. I'd appreciate if you wait until business from the public, I will be...
As you know, they call you, you're off.
I totally understand that, but I, but this is not the time.
They call you.
This, I call...
You should respond.
I call people back. Please have a seat until we get...
My next question is...
There's, sir, are you speaking on the, well, on the topic at hand in this public hearing? On the public hearing, the matters are germane to this right now.
BCC.
Now, that's where you need to be.
Okay. College, I'm opposed to that, dude.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay. I'll leave writing the story.
Okay. Now, if you'd like to come back for business from the public, you can do that.
My next question to you and all your affiliates, do you think it's right for the city and a public community, not a private community, a public community, to go behind closed doors and make a deal with an annexation to this city for water without the public knowledge?
Sir.
And we, and we, whoa, whoa.
No, 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 no.
And we, the public votes on bonds and measures to your college, to the public college.
Sir, this is a public hearing about annexations.
Oh, I am. I'm a public person.
I get that, but this is not business from the public. You're not understanding me.
So, so raise your hands. Would you, is that agreeable to you?
Recess the meeting.
That's not agreeable to you.
You're disrupting the meeting. I'd appreciate it if you...
No, I'm not disrespecting you.
Business from the council, come back during that business from the public, during that time. Could you do that for me?
I'm just saying...
Would you please leave, sir? You're being disruptive to the good order of the business.
Alex Johnson II.
Yes, sir. That's who I am. You have an opportunity to speak to us during business from the public.
It's a public college, not a private college.
I apologize for that disturbance. We're, we will then bring back the meeting at 6:37. Does any member of the audience or attending virtually wish to speak in favor of the application? Does any member of the audience attending virtually wish to speak in opposition to express concerns of the application? Does any member of the audience attending virtually wish to speak neutrally of this, of the application? Does the staff have any rebuttal testimony?
Yes, as to the request for the map, I'm happy to provide that. I made a note here, so I will forward it to Ms. McDaniel. Gordon, can you speak to the effect of the annexation along 53rd Avenue right-of-way and what that entails as far as the budding county's properties in the county?
Sure, I think there were a couple of questions about that. One was about why the irrevocable request to annex map just showed the property and the annexation shows the property and part of the city property to the north and, and the right-of-way of 53rd. The reason for that is because the only property that had to sign an irrevocable request to annex was the LBCC property, so that was the only property on that map. We're annexing these other areas to basically clean up messes that are outstanding there. The, the city property to the north, if you'll notice in the drawing there, it has a diagonal line across it. There was a mistake made back in the 60s, I believe, with the annexation. They didn't annex the entire property, so there's this diagonal line running across country through there. We are annexing the southern part of the city landfill property along with 53rd in order to just clean up city boundary in that area. And then in terms of people in the county being forced to pay for sidewalks or sewer or water, they won't have to do anything until they annex and develop their property. If one of them in the future annexes and wants to hook up to sewer or water, they'll pay for it then. Until then, they won't pay for anything. There, nothing will change with this annexation.
I understand that, I mean, that...
Excuse me, sir, ma'am, could you please come up and get a microphone?
Dr. Kefi, I see where you can get my map. Because you're the one that can answer my question. This is a part that I'm very concerned about. It's not, right here's where it goes to. Why are you going up here? You're not going all the way up 53rd Road.
Because that would, the, the property to the north is not completely annexed. We would need to annex part of that property for it to make sense, otherwise we'd leave an island of property out there. So we only annex 53rd to the point where we have property already annexed to the north.
But all the way up 53rd, it is not annexed into the city. I'm, I'm, I do not see why. Here is the irrevocable...
So can we just please take that offline after the hearing? This is a larger discussion, so I do appreciate your passion. So go ahead and finish your testimony.
I would pull up the, the map of the, that's going to get annexed further.
Only to have representative pages on those.
Oh, I see. You don't have all the...
No, I didn't put all of them on there. But here's...
Okay, that map and do, yeah.
Let me share it.
Share with us?
I am. You have that same error with somebody else that's sharing a screen, so let me try it Comes the master.
You go.
And then hit that button right there.
This is the best map we've got in our presentation to show what's going on with the 53rd Avenue property. What's hashed in black there is the property itself. Just to the north of that is the remainder of city property that didn't get annexed back in the 60s, I believe it was the 60s. You can see that there's a line...
There's no arrow on that.
Oh, does the arrow show up? Yeah. Okay, there's a line that starts on the city property here and goes across like that all the way over to here. That was what, everything north of that line got annexed back in the 60s, and they were supposed to go all the way down to 53rd, all the way down to here and annex it, but somebody goofed up in the legal description, so only the stuff north of that line got annexed. So today, we're trying to annex this piece, the remainder of the city landfill property, the LBCC property, and then the southern half of this property that was also had that line going through it, that got annexed in 1993. So we're annexing the right-of-way of 53rd south of that property, so just to make everything make sense.
Just cleans it up.
Just cleaning things up. It's basically, that's what all this is. This is all housekeeping. We're annexing right-of-ways that should have been annexed before but didn't get annexed when the neighboring property annexed. We're annexing all the irrevocable requests to annex for the last 25 years that have happened when people hooked up to sewer and water. This is just simply a housekeeping mission.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have procedural questions that would like to raise, raise at this time? If so, please raise your hand. If you're attending in person, if you're attending virtually, please turn on your microphone or camera and raise your, and raise your hand to be called upon, or if you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called upon. I declare this public hearing closed at 6:45 PM. Does the city council wish to discuss the case?
I have a question. Yes, thank you. Without digging through 120 pages of agenda packet, can you tell me the total acreage of the section of the LBCC property that is to propose to be rezoned to RS 6.5?
The whole property is about three acres, three and three quarters acres in size. The, probably, well, I call it the easterly half of the property, but that easterly half would be about an acre and a half, realizing that there's a significant wetland that encumbers much of that property.
Right.
So as a result, I'm thinking that even though the zoning will end up being RS 6.5 if this is approved, the developable area would be really restricted based upon the location of those overlays to about three quarters of an acre.
In my mind, that, that translates to undevelopable, but I'm not as creative as some other people, so...
Well, and another thing, too, is that the nearest sewer line to this property is 900 feet to the east.
Oh, my goodness.
So, I mean, the, the odds of this ever developing more intensely than it is now, I mean, professionally, I just, it'd be extremely remote. There's a lot of money that would have to be paid to bring that sewer line in.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Sure. Any other council, council novices?
Yes. I'm glad you reiterated the point about three quarters acre being developable. I wanted to make sure I heard that clearly. I was concerned when I saw photos of high water, and if I'm understanding correctly now, that is wetland and not any, anything that's slated to be developed. I'm also concerned about some of these folks where they mentioned not wanting to have to pay for drainage and sidewalks and things like that. Am I understanding correctly now that if this one three-quarter acre is potentially developed, that is, that is, I don't see how any, any other properties would be impacted and, and owners be asked to put a sidewalk in front of their home? Is that anything that could possibly happen in the future?
The only way that would happen in the future is if those properties that are still in the county decide to annex, in which case they would have to pay connection fees to those, to that infrastructure. But then, that's if they choose to annex. That's not something that we would compel them to do.
So everything that's currently slated to be annexed doesn't in any way make it so that people who own property out in any of these areas will have to pay to have sidewalks put in or have drainage of water?
Correct.
Thank you. Just want to make sure I got that loud and clear.
Thank you. Any other councilor have anything? Counselor McGee?
I doubt.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Smith? Thank you. There are two ordinances in your consideration in the council packet. Will the city attorney please read the, read the ordinance in title only?
An ordinance proclaiming annexation of properties identified on Lynn County Assessor's Map Number 11S03W09AC, tax lots 600, 1,02700, and 11S03W09D, tax lots 2,300, 2,600, 3,200, and 11S03W03A, tax lots 7,700 and 7,800, and 11S03W04... 3,200, and 11 S03 W03A, tax lots 7,700 and 7,800, and 11 S03 W04 DD, tax lots 1,100 and 1,300, and 11 S03 W10, tax lot 401, and 11 S04 W24, tax lot 625, and portion of 500, and amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map by amending the Albany zoning map and adopting findings of fact and conclusions.
Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance a second time in title only?
I move to read the ordinance a second time in title only.
Second.
There's a second? Thank you. Would the council like to make a motion? We have to vote. So all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you. Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance proclaiming annexation?
Mayor, I'll have to read it again.
You read it second.
I wish, I wish I didn't, but.
Would the city attorney read the ordinance a second time?
An ordinance proclaiming annexation of properties identified on Lynn County Assessor's Map Number 11 S03 W09 AC, tax lots 600, 1,000, 2,700, and 11 S03 W09 D, tax lots 2,300, 2,600, 3,200, and 11 S03 W03A, tax lots 7,700 and 7,800, and 11 S03 W04 DD, tax lots 1,100 and 1,300, and 11 S03 W10, tax lot 401, and 11 S04 W24, tax lot 625, and a portion of 500, and amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map by amending the Albany zoning map and adopting findings of fact and conclusions.
Do you have any discussion, council? Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance proclaiming annexation?
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Would the clerk do a roll call vote, please?
David, do you need to have them read the suggested motion?
Yes, that would be good. Thank you.
Do we have suggested motion in the packet?
I'll do it. I move the city council adopt an ordinance that would approve the land use application for annexation with concurrent rezones to RM, RS 6.5, and OS under planning files AN-03-23 and ZC-06-23 as described in the November 27, 2023 staff report. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions in the staff report, testimony presented at the hearings, and the findings in the support of the application made by the city council during deliberations on this matter.
Now, do I have a second?
Second.
Now, would you roll a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Novak?
I will vote in favor of this based on assurances from staff because I had grave concerns, but I feel that they've been addressed. So yes.
Counselor Newton?
Yes.
Counselor Kupczynski?
Yes.
Counselor Modigou? Sorry. Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor McGee?
Yes.
Thank you. An ordinance withdrawing the property from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance withdrawing the property from Albany Rural Fire Protection District in title only?
An ordinance withdrawing territory identified on Lynn County Assessor's Map Number 11 S03 W09 AC, tax lots 600, 1,000, 2,700, and 11 S03 W09 D, tax lots 2,300, 2,600, 3,200, and 11 S03 W03A, tax lots 7,700 and 7,800, and 11 S03 W04 DD, tax lots 1,100 and 1,300, and 11 S03 W10, tax lot 401, and 11 S04 W24, tax lot 625, and a portion of 500 from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District.
Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance a second time in title only?
I move to read the ordinance a second time in title only.
Second.
Or a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, nope. Will the council like to make a, excuse me, city attorney please read the second time in title only?
An ordinance withdrawing territory identified on Lynn County Assessor's Map Number 11 S03 W09 AC, tax lot 600, 1,000, 2,700, and 11 S03 W09 D, tax lots 2,300, 2,600, 3,200, and 11 S03 W03A, tax lot 7,700 and 7,800, and 11 S03 W04 DD, tax lots 1,100 and 1,300, and 11 S03 W, tax lot 401, and 11 S04 W24, tax lots 625, and portion of 500 from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District.
I move the city council adopt an ordinance that would withdraw properties listed in planning file AN-0323 from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District.
Second.
Would you do a roll call, please, clerk?
Counselor Novak?
Yes.
Counsel Newton?
Yes.
Counselor Kupczynski?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor McGee?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The decision of the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal not later than 21 days after the decision becomes final. Within five working days following adoption of the amendment or new land use regulation, the director shall forward the Department of Land Use, Land Conservation and Development a copy of the adopted amendments and findings and notify the department of any substantial changes which may occur, have occurred in proposal, in a proposal of any previous notification to the department. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is business from the public. No materials were submitted. And we have three people signed up to speak. Mr. Tom Cordier.
Tom Cordier, 2240 Northwest Park Terrace. My little street has five houses on it bounded by 21st and 22nd out in North Albany. My experience is that our leaves were not picked up. And I called, my understanding, as I recall, the last day for leaf pickup was December 15th, which is a Friday, I believe. And starting early in that week, I called the number that were asked to call when you try to reach that company. And I was assured that my, I gave my name and address and account number, and I was assured that the 15th was the last day and that my leaves would get picked up. So I went one day and they weren't picked up. So I called that number again. And they said, well, we put it in the system, and so they must have just missed it or ignored it or something. So I said, well, please keep that button in place because I need my leaves picked up. I have two great big maple trees in the back, and I hand-loaded packed, wet trash containers or lawn debris containers, packed them full of leaves, and I dump them in the street, which I've done. I've been at that position, at that address for 30 years. I had seven piles out front, and I needed it picked up. And I kept getting assurances that it would get picked up. It didn't get picked up. So the following Monday, I went, I went to the facility where their office is and asked, how come I didn't get it picked up? And the gal at the desk, she pulled it up and said, oh, I, I don't know. You'll have to talk to one of the, one of the managers of the drivers. And so I did, so he came out, and he said, oh, we, we made three, three trips out there. I said, no, you didn't. And my neighbor confirms that you didn't make three trips to this little one-block street. You didn't do that. And you don't have any evidence to show me, do you, that it really happened? He said, no. I said, well, I called the number, and it's in your system. And he said, well, if you really want anything from us, you need to drive down here to talk to us.
Right, sir. Thank you for your time.
So it's a community number, apparently, that is remotely managed, and you guys need to get that fixed. When I call that number, I expect to have.
Thank you, Tom. We'll take that. I, city manager's already written a note down, contacting the public services. Thank you.
And it would have been helpful if you'd have had the clock right here.
I thought it was there.
Because it wasn't.
I'll talk, I'll take that to the staff. ADA Director Lisa Grotto?
Good evening. Lisa Grotto, Albany Downtown Association. Just wanted to give you a quick downtown update. Wanted to first share that we're excited about the long-awaited book, the one that is wonderfully about the Carousel. It is titled "The Miracle on First Avenue", and it was written by Jennifer Moody and Wendy Kirby, who was the person behind bringing a carousel to our town. If you missed history bites today, you've got two opportunities to catch up with the ladies. They'll be doing book signings at the Carousel on Saturday, the 27th, and again on February 4th, and the details are in our newsletter and on their website. The Great Gatsby is going to be premiering at Albany Civic Theater, and this is something new. It's been brought to the stage by a Portland playwright, and this is the premiere of that opportunity. So that should be very exciting. We've got our Meet the Neighbor section this month that is toward wellness and the starting of the new year. So it speaks to our Daily Energy Nutrition Store, as well as a number of places that offer massage and other ways to treat your body well for the new year. Very delighted that our volunteer spotlight is on a dear friend and community partner, Rebecca Bond, and all that she does in her lack of spare time to support the Downtown Association in our efforts, and brings her family along to hang baskets and take them down and put up the Mother's Day sign and so many other things. She, in fact, was among the team that planted the first hanging baskets, strung the lights on the first snowflakes, the original ones, and lots of other projects over 20-some years ago. A couple other things. Gallery Cala Puya has their Call to Artists out for their big show of little art. Some folks like to call that the eight-by-eight exhibit. So they're done by young and old and large and small, and there's also a three-dimensional opportunity, but everything must be eight-by-eight. And a wrap-up on the downtown twice-around Christmas parade. And again, I'd like to thank the councillors who came on down and enjoyed the evening in the trolley and joined the mayor and some kiddos in lighting the tree. There are just a few more items that are coming up, and I'm sure you'll look at our newsletter to see it. But one last thing in here is that we are working with the Walker Consulting Team on the parking assessment, and we put together a very brief survey for different categories of individuals, consumers, businesses, residents, and employees of the downtown, among others. And they can answer just a couple of questions about what time of day they use parking, when they use, how they use parking, and any thoughts they may have so that we're capturing that, that public and message that we're taxed to bring to the meetings as our role of the downtown and parkways. So.
Thank you so much, Director Grotto. I really appreciate your time this evening, and thank you for your report. Are you passing the newsletters to us?
I have those available after.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next name on here, it looks like David G. I cannot make this out. Are a doctor in the house? I think it's the gentleman that left earlier.
Yeah.
Paul, is it Paul, the first name?
It's, it's impossible to read.
Okay.
I mean, I've, I've looked at insurance documents every day of the year, and I just can't read this one. So, thank you very much. First reading of an ordinance. amend the Albany Municipal Code, Chapter 2.6, procurement. Diane Marzinski, Marzinski? Am I saying that right? Yes. On page is 124 to 129 in your packet.
Good evening, mayor and councillors.
Good evening.
This is to amend AMC 2.66 procurement. Staff is requesting to modify the price thresholds for small and intermediate goods and services, personal services, and small public improvement contracts, revise the value of the procurements that require city council approval, and to adopt alternative methods to advertise procurement solicitations and receive bids. Chapter 2.66 was established back in 2005, and since then, we've had no modifications to that threshold in the code. Recently, Senate Bill 1047 was introduced. It was to, applied to reduce the barriers to contracting offerings, which would also, if it was implemented, would allow us to reduce our administrative costs. The small goods and service dollar threshold would rise from $10,000 up to $25,000. That would also be applicable to your construction projects. This would allow a lot of opportunities for a smaller business to be able to submit a bid. In addition, the contracts that we're going to cancel were at $150,000. That required approval. We are requesting that that be increased to $250,000 as well. This would be more in alignment with current pricing. In addition, ORS does allow for public notice of bids and proposals to be published by electronic means if we can find that this is a cost-effective method. In the last two years, we've spent about $21,000 on procurement-related solicitations alone. Currently, our process when we reach out to contractors for opportunities is to send an email to them, as well as advertise in the Daily Journal of Commerce and in the Democrat Herald, as well as we have many electronic bulletin boards that come by and sweep our website every Monday and then submit that information out to registered suppliers. So currently, we are getting a national exposure. Staff has found that these requests are in our best interest for the city. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions regarding these.
Staff, council, Counselor Smith and Counselor Kupczynski.
The methods of advertising opportunities to bid, you mentioned that the sweeping of multiple sites, giving more opportunity for people across the country. Our local vendors and suppliers who are registered with us as customers also are included in that, that notice. Is that correct? Or they, they would have opportunities to find out about that through the same channels?
They could, yes. They would be able to register as suppliers. We have in the past also, I think I was remiss to say that we have also advertised on our website, but that's exactly how they are getting that information and distributing it out nationwide. So anybody can register for some of those different supplier opportunities.
And this would be eliminating the Democrat Herald and the Journal of Commerce as, for advertising?
It would. We can always do more, just not less. So oftentimes, it's very advantageous to advertise in the DJC because it has statewide distribution, and it's a trade journal, and also sometimes the public noticing requirements do require that in addition to your advertisement in your local paper, you need to also advertise in a trade journal.
How has the change in publication schedule for the Democrat Herald affected any advertising that we're doing?
The recent changes that the Democrat Herald has implemented has made it difficult upon staff because we have to go out and actually submit to the Democrat Herald staff our advertisements. our advertisements almost a week in advance. That makes it difficult with all the administrative costs as well, and it's caused a lot of confusion, actually.
Thank you.
And I would like to add that it's not in alignment at all with the DJC. One advertises on a Tuesday now, the other advertises on a Monday, so we have decided to put it on our website on a Monday to make sure we have that extra day.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Kupczynski?
Yes. Are you aware of any businesses locally that have been unable to bid on something because they wanted to do more than what our current limits are?
Nobody has brought that to my attention. However, when you have a threshold of $10,000, that is, so you can direct acquire a contractor from zero to $10,000. This would raise that to $25,000. So they would have, they would not have to fill out a complete request for quotations, which is additional paperwork for them to complete and upload and submit.
I guess I'm trying to figure out if something's broken and we're trying to fix it, or if we're just trying to give it additional opportunity for people?
The state is looking at it from the perspective of giving additional opportunities to disadvantaged businesses and removing restrictions and requirements that may have previously been in place by certain agencies.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Novak? Councilor McGee?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't have any questions either. I get the emails, and I send them out to people that have reached out to me, and do we post on social media at all?
Not currently unless... I've not had anybody request it to be posted on social media. We have been doing those other op... That has not been addressed yet.
I asked the question because Matt has done a wonderful job of getting information out, and people respond to him and respond to the city's social media pages on Facebook. I'm not sure about the other ones, but maybe Matt can speak to that. But is this maybe an opportunity, and it goes broad, because people share those opportunities with business entities they know? So just a thought. So, any other questions for Diane? Will the city attorney please read the ordinance and the title only?
An ordinance amending ordinance 5612 and AMC Chapter 2.66 to modify the price thresholds for small and intermediate goods and services, personal services, and for small public improvements. Revised the value of procurements that require city council approval. Adopt alternative methods, excuse me, alternate methods to advertise procurement solicitations and receive bids and proposals by electronic means.
Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance a second time and title only?
I'll move to read the ordinance a second time and title only.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Do the attorney please read the ordinance a second time and title only?
An ordinance amending ordinance 5612 and AMC Chapter 2.66 to modify the price thresholds for small and intermediate goods and services, personal services, and for small public improvements. Revised the value of procurements that require city council approval. Adopt alternate methods to advertise procurement solicitations and receive bids and proposals by electronic means.
Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I'd move to adopt the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you very much, Diane.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda is adoption of a resolution clarifying park system development charges for accessory dwelling units and multifamily units. Director Kim Ladain, excuse me, pages 130 and 131 in your packet.
Good evening, council. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Good evening.
A second so I can share my screen. Visuals always help me, so. All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity. I know you just keep hearing me come back about SDCs, and every time, we're just making it a little bit better. So tonight, we're not changing anything, no new fees, we're just clarifying, because we want to make sure that we're being as transparent as possible. So, quick how we got here, 2021, Parks Master Plan was passed by council. In 2022, an updated methodology went into effect to help encourage affordable smaller, affordable housing in smaller square footage homes, single-family homes. And then, this past June, you all helped to pass updated rates for the first time in 22 years based on that methodology. When I wrote the resolution, I wrote it based on single-family homes, and I did not include accessory dwelling units or multifamily homes. So, as a reminder, we based it, it's a scalable fee for our single-family homes, so if you build smaller, your SDC charge is smaller. So when it comes to single-family, sorry, non-single-family rate structures, this, the information that these rates are based off of were approved in the methodology. We just want to call it out, so that if people have any questions, it's not, they're not having to, ooh, excuse me, go through a multi-page methodology. Instead, it'll be in our rate sheet. So, these are flat fees. For an accessory dwelling unit, it would be $2,240.96. And for multifamily units, that's a duplex, triplex, fourplex, or apartments, it would be $3,855.06 per unit. So, at this time, I'm just asking that you adopt the resolution to plainly spell that out, so that as we are moving forward and continuing to grow, those folks who are wanting to build these types of units know exactly what they're going into. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council, questions for Director Ladain? Well, thank you. Council, do we have a motion?
I move we approve a resolution revising park system development charges clarifying fees for accessory dwelling units and multifamily units and repealing resolution 7246.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Nine, next on the agenda is adoption of the consent calendar. Would the council like to make a motion?
I'd move to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you to the councilors. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you. Number 10 on our agenda is...
One quick comment for the resignation move that we approve a letter, thank you for service, et cetera, et cetera.
Yep, I have one.
Okay.
Yes, this is my appointment. Thank you. Next is staff reports. Park asset sponsorship and naming opportunities. Director Ladain will be back with us.
That went fast. Sorry about that. All right. Thank you. Hello again. So, I am here tonight in Excile to tell you a little bit more about a legacy giving and naming opportunities. For many years, our department has provided an opportunity for people to acquire legacy benches and legacy trees to honor loved ones in our parks and in our open spaces. As Montith River Park, ooh, as Montith River Park comes closer to opening, which we, I know we're all excited about, we feel this is the time to expand this program, as we know people will be interested in leaving their mark in this beautiful, well-loved space. Working with the Albany Parks and Recreation Foundation, donations will go towards maintenance of this refreshed park and amenities as we move forward. You all are aware of our department's financial situation, so we believe a program like this will help to provide creative funding designed specifically for that park, specifically Montith. In general, in the park, there will be several ways that community members will be able to contribute. So the first are legacy benches. Legacy benches that were already purchased over the years will remain in the parks. Many of them have been moved, they have been lovingly kept out at our park maintenance office, they'll be spiffed up, moved back in and reinstalled, as we want to make sure that we continue to honor those commitments and those people whose loved ones purchased on their behalf. There will be several new benches in the park and around the playground and splash pad area for someone to purchase a legacy bench. It is a $5,000 opportunity, and we've already fielded one request for someone who is excited to honor their loved ones at our splash pad. The cost goes to offset the materials and labor that go into the bench installation, and a small portion will go towards, once again, maintenance and upkeep. So I know everybody's familiar with buy a brick campaigns, so we're going to do something a little bit similar, but we're going to put our Parks and Rec twist on it. We're going to be creating an artistic community legacy garden on the side of our refurbished restroom facility. That's right. If you had told me two years ago I would be putting a community giving program on the side of a restroom, I would have laughed. But now that the construction is happening and you see that beautiful park, your eye goes towards the playground and the splash pad, and sure enough, the side of our refurbished restroom will be a lovely fixture to create more of an art and a focal piece. So, as people walk into Montith, they'll have a beautiful view of not only the stage in the park, but all their eyes will go there. So we're working on a design that will be unveiled soon, as soon as we get logistics buttoned up, but there will be five different giving levels that will range anywhere from $150 up to $3,000 for a few limited spots. Much like the benches, we have fielded several questions regarding giving programs as people are interested in putting their name or their family's name or honoring a loved one, so that when they come to the park, they'll be able to stand by it, take a picture of it, and say, yes, I have helped to make a positive mark. So, we are hoping, we are eager to launch this program so that we can show off the first round of donors when the park opens headed into the Fourth of July holiday for the 40th season of River Rhythms. So, here's something totally new for us. So, with this beautiful park, we'd be remiss to not consider larger naming opportunities for our two major features, the new stage and the children's playground and splash pad. As we just talked about, the children's play area will undoubtedly be a popular place. The playground has unique features that are unlike any other in our town, and we'll celebrate the opening of our very first splash pad. The naming rights to this space will be $75,000, $75,000, 75, sign me up. That's right.
I got a check, right.
Villa Dane Playground, for a five-year commitment. Our stage, our stunning new stage is really something to behold. While it's not even completed, it is already wonderful and incredible, and we know it's going to provide a beautiful space for River Rhythms for the next 40 years and beyond. This is a wonderful opportunity for someone to showcase their pride and support in our community. As a result, the naming opportunity for the stage is $250,000 for our five-year commitment. So there are benefits, obviously, associated with this sort of giving level. This type of thing does happen in other communities and in other organizations. The details will be coordinated through our Albany Parks and Recreation Foundation, along with the Resource Development Coordinator and the potential organization. Rates were based, were set based on doing research as to what other communities charge for similar benefits. So just so you know, we've gone out and we've tried to see what other folks are doing to make sure we're basing it off of it. So as we head into a busy summer season, we will begin to have these larger conversations with our community partners to see if they might be interested. Before we started these conversations, we wanted to share this information with you all. We'll work closely with the foundation so that we can be on the lookout. So, to be on the lookout, as you will undoubtedly see more on our website, social media, and hopefully beyond, as we begin to spread the word. And at this time, I welcome any of your questions.
Council, any questions for Director?
One question. I looked at the stuff with the leaves on the bathroom wall. I'm just, what vandalism? You don't think that could be an issue? It's always an issue. And so, we, oh my goodness, when we do anything now, we have to look at it to say, how can we make this as foolproof and... Well, I was just going to say, foolproof as possible. So, we're working with an installer who does awnings and signage and these types of installations all over. They know the environment that we all live in, and we're working to find something that will be as anti-graffiti vandalism, steal it and leave and sell it as we possibly can. Thank you. I'm glad that's been considered. It's at the forefront. Thank you.
Councilor Novak, Councilor Kupczynski?
Touching base with what Councilor Novak mentioned. Just anecdotally, the brand-new mural on the side of the Chamber of Commerce building has had zip vandalism issues at all. Now, it's possible they've got cameras there, which I presume ours will have cameras also in proximity, but that has not proven to be a problem so far.
Councilor Newton?
No, it just reminds me of this, my daughter asked, she's like, her name's Isla Rose, she goes, do you think one day Albany could have the Isla Rose Garden? So if there's an opportunity for me to ever plant a rose, a rose bush, I could, I'll donate it, you know?
That's cool.
And just tell her that one bush is her, is her Isla Rose Garden.
You should do that.
Oh my gosh, I love it.
That's pretty cool. Councilor Smith, you have anything?
I do. That raises a question that I didn't have before, but what's the status of the legacy rose garden in Montith Park that the Albany Rose Society planted? Is that being moved? Is it being preserved? Is it being enhanced?
That is something that I will have to look into, so...
I hadn't thought about that for some time.
I can report back on that.
Okay. I like this idea a lot. Initially, I thought ew, because I was thinking of all the professional sports arenas around the country that, you know, I'll never get over the Tony the Tiger Bowl. I just can't, I'm not going to forget that anytime soon. And I've always thought that was just kind of awful to give that kind of exposure to commercial enterprises. However, our system, our Parks Department depends on commercial sponsorship and has for many years. They pay the bills when the taxpayers can't, and they do it in a big way. To memorialize something like that on the stage or the children's play area, if it comes down to a commercial sponsor, I think is a wonderful way of capturing a moment in Albany history and preserving that. The other thing, I love the idea of the leaves. I hope they're vandal-proof, because I'm one of those people who, when I go into an establishment where there's a wall of memorial plaques, I read them. I want to know who helped make this possible. And I think, I'm eager to write a check for something. I'm glad to participate, and I think this is going to capture 2024 in a way that the park, it'll enhance the completion of the park.
We hope so, and thank you for that. And I do want to, we have been mindful, we don't want it to be logo soup, you know?
That's great.
The, we don't want to water it down so that people have to read, you know, 18 different things before they get to Albany River Rhythms. So, that's why we don't, we've left a little bit of flexibility, so that we can determine what's going to be a good fit. You know, it'll be appropriate businesses. We haven't decided where it'll go on the stage, because depending on what their logo looks like, some placements are going to be better than others. And in all honesty, until we see it done, it's, we're, we're going to have to be in the space to kind of get the real feel for it. And it's very possible that nobody could bite on this, that we could be having this conversation, and it will always just remain the stage at Montith River Park, and that's okay, too. But how amazing is this opportunity, and how attractive is it? And if we don't do it now, we won't ever do it, so we wanted to just kind of put this plan together, so we're ready.
I'm really happy that you're doing this, I do. I've seen other cities that I travel to, and they have the plaques, or they have the bricks. The Carousel has the bricks, and I think it's wonderful. When I walk in the Carousel, with the governor that one day, and I pointed out, that's Councilor Kupczynski, and I named people that I knew in the community that contributed to that success of the Carousel. So I think it's going to be wonderful to have it at our parks, so our visitors that come in here and visit with us can see that our members, our community members, participate in the development and beautification of our city. That's wonderful, and I'm going to write a check, too.
Oh, well, as soon as we get it going, I'll let you all know. Our foundation will be very happy. So, if there aren't any other questions, I just say thank you for your support. We look...
I'm sorry. Councilor McGee?
No, I just think it's great. I'm like smiling from ear to ear. I like the idea of the leaves and the memory. It's just going to be very pretty over there. I'm excited to see what happens.
Like I said, the total design of it, the actual, it may or may not have only leaves, so we're exploring some options, but it'll be in that vein.
Nice work. Thank you.
So, thank you all very much.
We look forward to future reports. Next staff report is Kurt Sorty modification of accessibility, access utility easement through city property. Director Matthew Rutgers, on page 180 to 186 in your packet.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and council. So, for, I'll actually be fairly brief tonight, but for my conversation, we'll be looking at the map on page 183, and I apologize for the folks that are in the crowd, I didn't have a... And I apologize for the folks that are in the crowd. I didn't have, didn't put the slide up, but it is in the packet. So back in November, November 8th, Mr. Sorty had come and requested from Counsel modification of an existing easement that Counsel had granted from the end of Moose Run up to his property, because his property was landlocked, so that the city had granted this easement. He was requesting to modify that to run a trail that would avoid some wetland impacts that would eventually lead to his property at a length of, I think it was about 1,500 to 1,600 feet. At that meeting, there was some discussion as to whether a driveway could be built across, particularly Track J that's shown on page 183, which is right at the end of Moose Run. So staff went away under Counsel direction to research that question in particular. We did get a title report done. That report did come back with a covenant that land lies over Track J, and that covenant or restrictive covenant is attached as Attachment C, starting at page 184. And that restrictive covenant actually prohibits the construction of any new roads, operation of any sort of motorized vehicle, motorcycle, dune buggy, car, anything like that, essentially preventing any sort of access off of Moose Run other than pedestrian access, if you will, that's currently being used for the Oak Creek Trail. So that's essentially what I'm here to report on, which was the request, as identified by Mr. Sorty, is not something that can be fulfilled due to that restrictive covenant. And that's kind of where we stop at this point, unless Mr. Sorty has another proposal. So this time, I actually, I think Sean had, or yeah, see if you guys had any questions, and then Sean will jump in.
So Counsel, anybody have any questions at this time? Counselor McGee?
Nope.
I have nothing.
Okay, Sean?
So the one thing, and I guess for the public that's here for in layman's terms, again, what was being proposed can't be done. I mean, the city can't grant that.
Cannot grant that?
Cannot. We cannot grant that, right. But Mr. Sorty has retained counsel. So I would caution the city councilors at this time to, if you are contacted by Mr. Sorty, to keep that in mind, because Mr. Sorty, like I said, he's retained counsel, and you gotta, you know, you don't want to, don't want to be talking to him with, you know, they're going to file litigation against us at some point in the near future. So I'm not saying that they are, but, you know, just in case. So, yeah, anybody have any questions on that or?
Any Council have any questions? Not hearing any.
All right, no, that's all we have.
Thank you.
Thank you. So there's no action taken there? Thank you very much. Personnel change, Item C, personal change request in the Finance Department, K.C. Headley, page 187 through 188 in your packet. Thank you for being patient with us.
So we currently have four full-time accounting specialist positions, and we would like to reclass two of them to payroll specialist. And we are also looking at changing the salary grade for the accounting specialist positions. Currently, two of the positions are solely accounts payable and accounts receivable items, and two of the positions are fulfilling payroll needs. And with the continued changes in legal requirements and added complexity to payroll with PLOs and reporting, we had HR go out and do a survey. They went out and researched what the pay scale was and what the job duties were.
Excuse me, what's a PLO?
Paid Leave Oregon.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. And right now, our payroll specialist, or accounting specialists who are doing payroll, do payroll for about 450 employees with six different bargaining agreements. So plus non-bargaining and temporary assignments. So with the complexities in that position, we're requesting a position reclassification for that. Effective January 1st for their positions. We meant to get to this sooner, but with holidays. And then the salary grade adjustments for the accounting specialist effective January 15th.
Counsel, any questions?
Just a comment. Back in the day, in olden days when I had my own business and had payroll, the complexity and legal requirements of payroll today is absolutely mind-boggling. Yes, it's necessary to do some of these things, even though we might not like them.
They work, I mean, they all work really hard, but payroll, there's constant changes. Oregon has made changes every year, and not only legal requirements, but reporting requirement. It's a lot to keep up on.
I saw the monies in the budget. I know that means for this biennium. So I just get concerned, because I know it's always, anytime you make these requests, the money's always there. Holly says the money's there, the money's there. But then the next go-around, the next couple of years, does it continue to be, I guess it continues to be budgeted at the higher rate? And I don't know, I don't know what to say.
Yeah, we do budget for this. We don't really see it as a lot of option, because, I mean, if our two payroll people were to step down, it would be really difficult to replace them with their skill set at our current rates, because we're competitively 23% below market in that position.
Ouch.
Yeah, I know. They can always justify.
If we don't pay, you know, if we, if, for example, there is one form that Oregon requires, and I've seen it in a place where it was filed one day late. The fine for that one day late for spot form was $2,500. You miss your payroll taxes by one day, we're looking at thousands. So we have to have competent employees.
How is that even okay?
I have an account that pays my payroll taxes. It just makes it easier for me.
They're not very forgiving in the payroll tax world with the IRS and the state of Oregon, because they don't really see it as employer money. They see it as trust money from employees. So they have really strict, unforgivable guidelines.
I guess that's where my real issue is, perhaps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Novak has a good point. This, you know, we're constantly, when we're talking about pay raises, escalations, and any kind of prices, we're worried about the next budget. Because Holly or Gina or any department director says it's in the budget for this budget, and it is, that you're absolutely right, there's no guarantee that it won't pose some difficulties for the next, for following budgets. And then that's something we have to worry about when the time comes to build that budget. But we're worried about a lot of, that picture is much bigger, including revenues and what's the state of our revenues. So it will be something that we have to take into account later on.
Thank you for acknowledging that.
Thank you. Thank you for asking the question, Counsel. Okay, does that it, Counsel? Any other Counsel? Counselor McGee, you have anything? Okay, thank you. So do I have a motion?
I'd move to approve the personnel changes as requested.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Next on tonight's agenda is business from the Council. I'll start with Counselor McGee. She's been waiting patiently for us, so Counselor McGee?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Kapczynski?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Novak?
Thank you. Likewise, nothing this evening.
Counselor Newton?
I have a few things. So, you know, looking at the weather forecast, I see some temperatures down in the teens. Monday, we have 17 degrees at night. I have a few things on my mind, our warming centers. I wanted to know status of the capacity. And then number two, I was thinking about Marvin's Gardens. Do we have any plans for any of our residents that might be staying at Marvin's Gardens? When it's 17 degrees out, I'm worried about people's safety. And then I also wanted to give a shout-out to Parks and Rec. My husband and I are, I think we're setting up tonight, we're going to do the ballroom dancing class. We finally secured a babysitter for each of the dance lessons, so we're very excited. So thanks for great programming and an excuse to get out with my husband. And then, yeah, I think I'll just say that is it.
Cool.
Mr. Mayor, I messed up. I do have something. May I, please? I'll be brief.
Go ahead.
I just want to say, this is directed to the folks who wrote letters and showed up. That means a lot to me. I look at, I know we all look at the things you write and the things you say, and I take it very seriously when people share concerns about something the city is planning on doing for whatever reason. So I, again, I was really concerned by the things you laid out, and those concerns were alleviated by the information that was shared tonight. But it matters. It matters that you showed up. It matters that you write letters and take pictures. And I just want to commend you for being willing to do that and to be here. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Smith?
Thank you. Counselor Newton's question about shelter capacity in Marvin's Garden leans right into something I was going to mention tonight anyway. As I reported, I think a month or so ago, I've been participating in the Lynn County Multi-Agency Coordinating Group to receive and distribute money that we received, that Lynn County got from the governor's office through House Bill 5019 for expansion of shelter beds, rapid rehousing of homeless persons, and street outreach. The committee that I served on to distribute that money has made a final report yesterday at the Heart Board meeting, and I have that for you. Pertinent to the shelter, to the warming center situation is that this allocation will allow Second Chance Shelter to add 42 beds in what used to be their warming center and is now beyond that immediately. They're ready to go. So that expands their capacity some. I do not know the current capacity at Helping Hands. But, and as always, the folks who are camped at Marvin's Garden have Second Chance to go to. It's less than a block away. Yeah, but the total for, that Lynn County received in two allocations, they got the initial one and then were served up another close to $900,000. Total was $2,906,746. That must be spent by the end of June of 2025. That money will go to Faith, Hope, and Charity, $953,240 for 30 new shelter beds. City of Sweet Home, $449,093 for new shelter beds and rapid rehousing. Second Chance Shelter, $292,565. That's for 42 new shelter beds. Creating Housing Coalition for Hub City Village, $129,500 for outreach and providing those connections to permanent housing. And Crossroads Communities in Lebanon, $136,500 for outreach and rapid rehousing. Some of the funds have been retained by the Community Services Consortium to help with move-in deposits and rental assistance for up to 32 households, and that rapid rehousing is well underway.
Excellent report.
Thank you.
I was just wondering, so we have 40, you said 42 beds. I saw that Lynn County put out a graphic on the amount of the warming shelter. Warming center, and that was the only one that was mentioned, was the Second Chance. I'm wondering if there were only 42 beds. Is that enough? How do we know, like, if there might be people that usually aren't? I don't know. I'm just curious. I know the count is coming up soon, so I'm just not sure.
Yeah, count is coming up at the end of the month. The 20th, January 24th is a point in time count for sheltered people, and unsheltered homeless will be counted from the 22nd through the 31st throughout there.
So, thank you. And with that, one of my items was, there is a point in time count. People are looking for volunteers to assist with that process. And so it's on social media, on Facebook, and if you're interested in participating in that, you could get involved or ask questions.
Yeah, email PITcount@communitieservices.us.
And that would be.
Sir, question.
Go ahead.
Counselor Smith, this is not the funding for the opioid settlement of constituents. Send me an email regarding it, and this is just for housing, correct?
This is just for housing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So for me, last thing, last person is me. Better Together, my group, that we focus on taking care of seniors in all different aspects of their life. We had our annual Christmas party at the Carousel, and my counterparts donated over $200 for me to buy tokens for our kids in our community so I can pass those out to kids in the community. So it's a charitable donation that went to our community, and kids have already started reaping the benefits of me buying those tokens. I was concerned about the warming centers, the second thing on my list as well. I did see the one warming center, last year there was three. Second Chance, Chance, and Albany Helping Hands. So that's a phone call that we probably need to have.
The last I heard from Helping Hands was that they were not able to do that because they had managed it last year with residents as staffing it, and that didn't work out very well. So they were looking for volunteers or someone to staff it.
I'm curious, it seemed if they are at capacity at the warming center, we do have, going from three to one is pretty drastic. I know we've used the community room at the fire department. I'm not sure if that'd be an option we could look into to expand in like a...
Let's have Peter take that.
Emergency scenario.
Let's have Peter look into it.
Yeah, that's in my list of things to talk to you about.
Okay, so let me finish up. So to answer the gentleman that spoke earlier about, will we call him back? Everybody that's ever called me since I've been on City Council, as mayor or city council, has gotten a call back and emailed back or a cup of coffee. So yes, I will call you back, and I will respond to emails. Part of our job as your selected officials is to be responsive and transparent. So to answer any doubts about our response to his question, I will call you back. And when I meet with high schools or I go to senior community or I do a talk publicly, the first thing I do is say, take out your phones, and the teachers hate this, and write down my phone number, put it in your phone. It's 541-730-5064. Don't have any doubts about calling me. I will respond to your phone call or your text. With that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do have a couple of things to talk to you about this evening. I had hoped to catch him before he left, but he slipped out. When you were briefed this evening about annexation, Gordon Stephens Meyer sat next to David Martin. Gordon will be retiring at the end of this month after 29 years of service to the city of Albany. So I hope that if you get a chance to see him and thank him, that you'll do that. We certainly will, and we will definitely miss him. Next thing is that Lynn County has responded to our, my email to the county administrator about a joint work session. So we have that tentatively scheduled for February 12th at the Expo Center. That's a Monday. It'll be 4 o'clock, just like your normal work sessions, but it will be over at the Lynn Expo Center. And we're working on that, so, you know, I don't anticipate changes yet, but it might. Thirdly, you mentioned warming centers. On Sunday, Station 11 will be open as a warming center. That's when it's really supposed to get down to quite low. And then on Monday, the 15th, the First Christian Church has volunteered to be a warming center. The library points out that they're, you know, during their opening hours, they're always available. And as Counselor Smith pointed out, Second Chances and Helping Hands, to my knowledge, are available. Now, the last thing I wanted, I'm going to ask Matt Harrington to put up a slide, and I'll ask Sean Kidd here to distribute five copies of what is, what the League of Oregon Cities is calling their comprehensive approach to addressing Oregon's... is calling their comprehensive approach to addressing Oregon's addiction crisis. And the reason I bring this to you tonight, and I've sent it to you before, but being on the front lines of the addiction crisis that we as a state are facing, exacerbated by Measure 110. The League of Oregon Cities and partners, including the Oregon Association of Chiefs of Police, have collaborated and generated 11 policy recommendations for the state legislature. And they've asked for our help in communicating these policy recommendations. As you all know, the rise in fentanyl overdose deaths is alarming, and the detrimental effects that the crisis is having on community safety and quality of life across Oregon is obvious. So this approach is meant to be pretty comprehensive. Ballot Measure 110 failed to recognize that drug addiction is both a public health and a public safety crisis. And success in the fight against addiction is gonna require new tools and a significant allocation of resources in public health. So these 11, and I put them up here in three sides, slides. These 11 policy recommendations are broken into two categories. The first is restoring public safety, and the second one is treatment and community-focused solutions. So that first one, to reclassify, this would provide for treatment intervention, making an A misdemeanor. It would include diversion eligibility and dismissal of a charge upon successful completion of a one-year diversion, and it would have the effect of compelling those who struggle with addiction to enter treatment without turning to an approach that focuses on incarceration. Again, each of these 11 will be in that little handout, and you can review them at your leisure later. The second one up there focuses on the supply side, the dealer's side, not the user's side. And by restoring 34 years of state law that allowed the state to charge dealers when there's substantial evidence of the attempt to deliver significant quantities of drugs, we'll restore that accountability. The third one, modifying statutory pretrial hold language. A modification in that law would make it clear that pretrial hold for dealers is a community priority. Some of this sounds like pretty basic stuff, but it's stuff that needs to be fixed. Can you go to the next slide? Thanks, Matt. Funding county probation departments to supervise misdemeanor theft and property crime cases. It's estimated that between 50 and 80% of property crimes are committed by those who steal to support an addiction. County probation departments don't currently supervise misdemeanor theft or property cases, which means there's no opportunity for a drug alcohol addiction screening and no requirement for drug treatment as part of their supervision package. This would, this solution makes mitigating future harm impossible, or this current state of affairs makes mitigating future harm impossible, and fails to capture a population where there's significant overlap between persons committing crimes and those possessing controlled substances. The next one, creating a new A misdemeanor for public use of a controlled substance. Public use, in this case, would include use in public and private buildings. The offense would be identified and statute as a designated drug-related misdemeanor, which would allow for state funding of treatment and supervision costs related to violations of the prohibition. Next one, creating a new Class A misdemeanor. All of these steps that we're talking about, all of these solutions need to be accompanied by a penalty for use in an enclosed public space that endangers another person. The language would provide that, quote, "A person commits the crime of recklessly endangering another person if the person, while in an enclosed area, knowingly consumes a controlled substance in a manner that creates an immediate risk of consumption by another person." And this would also be accompanied by a dealer addendum that would, if you heard, if you remember Lenny Bias, Len Bias, the basketball player who died as a result of an overdose from the sale of drugs from a dealer. This would provide for a state charge for when the sale of drugs results in the death of the user. Again, it's seemingly common sense. And treatment and communicate, treatment and community-focused solutions. And I think, yeah, there we are, the first one up there, to prioritize adequate and sustainable funding for specialty courts. You know, specialty courts combine accountability and supervision with a treatment-oriented approach that addresses addiction and reduces recidivism. But the specialty courts in the state of Oregon are, in several jurisdictions, are at risk of discontinuing their operations due to a lack of funding, and this would urge the state to help provide that funding. Establishing the authority to utilize welfare holds. In many states, first responders are able to utilize welfare holds of up to 72 hours, where a person who's acutely intoxicated, to a degree where they pose a danger to themselves or others, can be held in a custodial environment and given supervised medical care. And then after the 72 hours is up, they have the option of leaving or staying and receiving additional services. Creating adequate stabilization and detox facilities. Oregon has an absence of dedicated sobering centers and stabilization facilities, which leaves communities helpless when they're dealing with severely addicted individuals who require detox and stabilization before they can successfully enter treatment. Detoxification is really the first step in the journey to recovery. Supporting the establishment of opioid overdose quick response teams. QRTs, respond after a reported overdose. And in the model that the LOC is advocating, a small team reaches out to an individual who's recovering from an overdose event and offers person-centered services. The team might have a police officer, EMT, peer recovery mentor, or a treatment professional. And the goal of QRTs is to reach an individual in the time immediately after an overdose event. Supporting the alignment, or supporting aligning the siting of residential and secure residential facilities. And let's see here, are you, it might be the next slide there. Yep. And there's a significant need in communities for residential and secure residential facilities for those who are experiencing mental health and substance abuse challenges, and this has become even more acute with problems that are, the crisis that's facing the Oregon State Hospital. It impacts communities across the state, and ensuring that land use policies for siting secure facilities comply with federal requirements helps to, would help to expedite desperately needed expansion of Oregon's behavioral health residential treatment. So the reason I bring it to you now is because the league is hoping that the legislature will take action on this in the short session which comes up next month. So February 5th, the legislature will convene, and then they are scheduled, that's Monday, February 5th, they're scheduled to adjourn on Sunday, March 10th. So that's a very short time in which to take some action. But these are measures that the league, in partnership with the organizations I told you about, is urging the state legislature to consider, and they would certainly appreciate our elected representative's support and communication of the priorities with our state legislators. And with that, I'll conclude and ask you if you have any questions.
Go ahead, Counsel Newton.
Not on Measure 110. That's a lot to digest. My question was about Station 11 and Albany First Christian. I haven't seen anything on, like, pushed out. How are folks gonna know about this?
That started today.
Okay.
That was pushed out today.
Okay. Thanks.
I have a question.
Counsel McGee?
Peter, regarding what you just stated about the opioid usage and all of that, someone contacted stating that the city receives some sort of settlement for opioid usage and wonder where that money had gone or is gone. So I don't know if you could speak to that, or if that was in, you know, I don't know, they contacted me, I think like two days ago regarding that.
Yes. Yes, and we've had some questions about it too, from people who are looking at using those funds for starting various initiatives. One of the things that we've used the funds for is Narcan, and I've asked Gina Jaeger to come to the microphone to talk about other uses of those funds. And I would point out too, that they are coming to us in a rather, in a kind of an unconventional way, a certain amount per year for, I think it's 10 years.
Okay, because this person was asking about that in regards to a detox center in Lynn County, but I think we've had conversations about that. Okay.
So Counselor McGee, I actually talked to that person too, who was talking to Lynn County about the detox center, I believe Tuesday morning, Monday morning. So what we've been spending the money on, we've been using it for some Narcan and other types of medical expenses. We also use it for overtime for education to schools and other organizations where we want to help them understand what the dangers are of opioids. And then we've also been doing some peer support training for our first responders. It's really difficult when you are going on these calls and finding people who have overdosed, and so there's some peer support, they get training for that, and then they can come back into the organization and help other people and also train other people in that topic. So so far, that's how we've been, we get requests in from fire, police, other organizations for spending the money, determine whether or not it meets the criteria that the state of Oregon has put out, and then go from there. You know, one of the concerns about being a funding source for something is that, as city manager mentioned, this isn't infinite. You know, it will, there will be an end to this, and so I would hate for us to promise a funding source and then it goes away. So it's just something to think about in determining how we want to spend those funds.
And it is a certain amount, I think Peter said, over a 10-year period? Am I understanding that correctly?
I think that's what it is.
Okay.
And the city attorney just mentioned to me that might be actually 18 years. But the point is, the funds are finite. They're not, you know, we often talk in budgeting, when it come to the budget cycle, about one-time funds. These are not one-time funds, but they're not perpetual funds either. They're gonna be limited in their duration. So we just have to be, as Gina said, careful about the commitments that are taken on with it.
Okay. And this person was, I don't know if it's the same person, Gina Barbara Thayer?
Yes, that was, that was the person I talked with.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so I was gonna follow up, but since you have, I, all right, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Peter, are you done?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. So next meeting dates is January 22nd, 2024, at 4:00 p.m. for our work session, and Wednesday, January 24th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. for a city council meeting. And with that, I hope to see you there, and I will join the meeting at this time.